Clerk Moss, is my camera working?
Currently, it is not.
They put a new one in today and I hadn't figured out yet.
Is there a slider at the top of the screen?
I don't think so. It was working earlier.
Sometimes I forget to plug my camera into the USB port.
I may be doing this blind here. Sorry about that.
No worries. All right. Welcome, Commission members and Budget Committee members. We are live and ready to go with that. And Mr. Angie, I will hand it off to you.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and welcome Budget Committee members and members of our viewing public. We are excited to start our public hearing for fiscal year 2022, 2023, for the North Bethany County Service District for Roads. Next slide, please. And we'll do next slide because I think I just covered the welcome, Kevin. Thank you. And then I would like to turn it over to our interpreter, Victor, to walk us through instructions. And I do want to just express appreciation for both our Spanish interpretation services, as well as our ASL interpretation, to increase access for members of our community, as well as ensure access for committee members. So thank you for your service and for being here and part of this process. Victor?
Yeah, thank you for having us. Gracias por tenernos. Muy buenas noches a todos. Bienvenidos a esta reunión. Tenemos interpretación disponible en inglés y español, así que si puede tomar un momento para seleccionar su opción. Así se está ingresando por medio de una computadora de escritorio o portátil, le haga clic en el icono del globo en la parte inferior derecha de la pantalla de su computadora. O si está utilizando la aplicación de Zoom a través de un dispositivo móvil como un teléfono inteligente o tableta, presione las tres puntos con la leyenda más en la parte inferior derecha o superior derecha de la pantalla. De esa manera podrá seleccionar su idioma preferido. Si desea escuchar la reunión en inglés, puede seleccionar la opción inglés, o si prefiere en español, selección español. Y recuerde de... pueden intercambiar en cualquier momento, pero por favor seleccione una de las opciones. Si tiene alguna pregunta, por favor notifíquenos y como mucho gusto haremos lo mejor posible para ayudarle. Muchas gracias y bienvenidos. Welcome everyone. English and Spanish will be available for this meeting. So if you're joining us through a desktop or laptop computer, please click the globe icon. Look at it at the bottom right of your computer screen. Or if you're using the Zoom app through a mobile device such as a smartphone or a tablet, press the three dots with the legend and with the legend more. Look at it at the bottom right or open right-hand side of your screen. That way you will be able to select the language you prefer to hear on. So if you prefer Spanish, you can select Spanish or English. Please select English. If you have any questions or any concerns, please let us know and we'll do our best to help you. Also, if you can go to the next slide, please. También tenemos interpretación. Tenemos la diapositiva disponibles en español. Así que si usted desea seguir la reunión de hoy con dispositivos en español, por favor vaya a la página web del condado de Washington, que sería www.co.washington.or.us. Y de ahí va a poder encontrar la diapositiva en español. Also, we have the slides in Spanish available for today as well. So if you go to the county's website, www.co.washington.or.us, you will be able to find the slides in Spanish if you decide. Or if you would like to follow along in Spanish with a visual. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we get started, I want to turn it over to Tonia and let her introduce our newest CFO. And Clerk Moss, if you could promote Greg, that would be great. Thank you. Tonia?
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. And thank you, Mr. Rhodes, for your service as our interim chief financial officer. I know I and I see board members are, Board of Commissioners are nodding their head in just appreciation for your service during this time. And I do want to welcome Greg Munn, who is now, I see his camera on. This is Greg's first day as Washington County's new CFO. He has joined us from Deschutes County, where he spent the last four years as the CFO and treasurer. And prior to that, has extensive history in school districts, as well as counties as CFO. So I'm excited to welcome Greg, and he knows where his office is, and I know he knows where mine is. But Mr. Rhodes will be continuing to be acting as our interim chief financial officer through our budget process. So Greg can start to feel acclimated and hit the ground running. So welcome, Greg. Okay, and Mr. Rhodes, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Tonia. With that, we're going to turn it over to Chair Beechy to begin to call the meeting to order. And Clerk Moss, are you going to do the roll call?
Yes, I can. And Alfred, you chair Beechy to call to order.
Okay. Thank you very much. And welcome, Greg. Glad to have you and virtually meet you. Hopefully, we'll meet you all in person sometime in the next few months. I will call this meeting of the North Bethany County Service District for Roads Budget Meeting Committee Public Hearing to order.
All right. Thank you, Chair Beechy. Fu Han Ju?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Dan Reed?
Here.
Alicia Gruber?
Here.
Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Phi?
Here.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Chair Beechy?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here.
You have a quorum of eight, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you very much, Clerk. So our, I guess, our next order of business is to have our district budget overview.
Yes, ma'am. And we'll start with the overview. Stephen Roberts will do that. Then we'll have committee questions, take public comments, or community organization testimony. And then we'll ask the committee to take budget action toward the end of the meeting. So with that, next slide, please. I would like to introduce Mr. Stephen Roberts and his staff, and they will walk us through the North Bethany Budget Overview. Stephen?
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes, and good evening, Budget Committee members. Glad to see you again. I'm joined tonight by Sheila Jambrone, who's the Land, Justice and Transportation Senior Administrative Services Manager. That's a mouthful. So she's the one who helps us actually pull all of our budget documents together. So she's going to actually talk a little bit more about the financials. I'm just going to provide some overview of the North Bethany County Service District for Roads and just high-level takeaway about how the district works. So I want to just jump in and want to remind you, I think we just talked about it. There will be an opportunity for Budget Committee member questions and discussion after the presentation and before the public testimony starts. So if anyone's following along in their budget books, the North Bethany County Service District for Roads begins on page 316 for orientation. And in the slide that you see on the map on the left, you'll see the Bethany Community Area. That's a designated community plan area in the county's comprehensive plan. It's an area, obviously, located north of Highway 26, but the Multnomah County line on the north and east. And it is primarily, well, it is exclusively an incorporated urban area. That means it's urban, but outside of cities. That means that the county is the direct service provider for transportation services, things like road maintenance, road construction. Excuse me. And then in the map on the right, you'll just see within that larger Bethany Planning Area, the area that's outlined in blue now is the North Bethany Community Plan Area and also the North Bethany County Service District for Roads area within the blue. You can see it's located north of Springville Road, east of 185th Avenue, and then goes north and east again to the Multnomah County line. It does include the Portland Community College, Rock Creek Campus. It does not include the Arbor Oaks Development, which is located also north of Springville on either side of Joss Avenue. That was an earlier development. The service district itself was established by the property owners in the district back in 2011. And it was formed pursuant to Oregon Revised Statute, Chapter 451. At the time, the district was established in 2011, the voters also approved the district's property tax rate, which is $1.25 per thousand of assessed valuation. The district itself plays an important role in implementing the North Bethany Transportation Funding Strategy, which was also adopted by the Board as a component of the North Bethany Community Planning Work. And it's also essential to implementing the community plan vision for a complete and connected community. The community plan and service district area totals about 700 acres. It was added to the urban growth boundary in 2006, and development began there in 2013. At full buildout, the area was planned for approximately 4,200 residential units. And to date, about 70% of those, so almost 3,000 units, have been permitted so far. I mentioned earlier the North Bethany Transportation Funding Strategy that was adopted by the Board with the community plan. The funding strategy just briefly relies on multiple revenue sources to deliver a list of 14, well, 12, I should say, 12 road improvement projects that were identified as important to the development of a complete community in North Bethany. The primary funding sources that you'll see identified when we get to the financial slide for the budget overview are the property tax that's generated by the North Bethany County Service District for Roads itself. Again, that is based on that $1.25 per thousand dollars assessed valuation. There's also Transportation Development Tax, and that's a countywide system development charge for transportation. And it's designed to help offset some of the costs associated with addressing growth needs in the transportation system. In the North Bethany Transportation Funding Strategy, 75% of the TDT collected in this area is captured and allocated specifically for the projects in the funding strategy. And the third big revenue source is the North Bethany Transportation System Development Charge. It operates very much like the TDT, but is very specific just to this area. And it totals about roughly two-thirds of the amount of the TDT. So that's on top of TDT. Development in this area pays this additional charge, again focused on helping to construct those 12 key projects identified in the funding strategy. The County Service District Budget Fund, which is Fund 215, is used to collect and essentially account for revenues received from the property tax itself generated by the district. And then those other funding sources I mentioned, Transportation Development Tax, North Bethany County Service District System, or North Bethany Transportation System Development Charge, too many things that sound similar, I'm sorry. Those funds are also moved into this budget fund. And then this budget fund is used to actually expend funds that are used on delivering those capital projects that are being delivered by the county. And then I think at this point, if we can go to the next slide, and I will hand it off to Sheila to give the actual budget overview.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. And just one moment. Chair Beechy, Commissioner Rogers has joined. So you have a committee of nine of 10 members now.
Good evening, and thank you, Stephen. So going through the numbers, adding the beginning fund balance and estimated new revenues, those are the highlighted in the blue bars on the slide. We estimate the district to have 18.9 million in resources for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Breaking down our expenditures, you will notice that all funds are budgeted as reflected with a zero of any fund balance. The preponderance of anticipated resources from the district are primarily appropriated as professional services to allow for project flexibility. Other charges include the district's portion of countywide indirect costs, along with staff charges for project management inspection of the projects being built. Costs for the district's portion of the road fund indirect charges and capital outlay for right-of-way acquisition on projects slated for next fiscal year are also included. Next slide. This slide just breaks down the project costs itemized under professional services in the budget. So full project funding is budgeted to allow for flexibility as we begin construction and to preserve funding for the projects that we have committed to build. The budget provides funds for the design and construction of Springville Road from Joss to Portland Community College entrance and reflects funding for the increased cost of this project. 5.6 million is allocated for the design and construction of the Kaiser Road Complete Street Improvements between Springville and Burger Road. And an additional 800,000 is budgeted for interim pedestrian improvements on Kaiser Road north of Broker Room. Next slide.
Thank you, Stephen and Sheila. We appreciate that. Just a reminder for those watching this evening or would like to go back and revisit the meeting that was held on May 19. We did hold a North Bethany meeting on the 19th, and that recording can be found on the 2022-2023 County Budget Reports website. Next slide, please. And with that, Chair Beechy, I'll turn it back over to you for Budget Committee questions and discussions.
And Clerk Moss, if you could help me see hands. I don't have a full scale. I'm up here all at once.
Absolutely. Chair Beechy, Alex, like Fu Han is unmuted?
No. My speaker is fine. I don't have a question.
Thank you. I do not see any hands raised. Chair Beechy?
Sheila, I did just have a question. I was just going over the numbers quickly a little bit ago. And from that previous slide on the funding projections, when I totaled the expenses, or when I totaled our mid-year estimate, I got a different number at the ending fund balance. I mean, it's just off by like 3,500 something, but I got like a 14. Should it? I'm just asking if it should reconcile? I got a 14.807945 instead of the 14.772.
Well, I'd have to check the math on that. I thought we had done that. These were pulled, so I can follow up. But yes, they should reconcile to answer your question.
Yeah, it's one of those funny things. It's like, well, do these numbers actually add up correctly? So I just thought I'd check, and I've done it three or four times, and I keep coming up with the with the larger number there. If we can just double-check those. Do we need to? Do we need to do that now so we have a correct? Yeah, are we accurate in what we're proposing and passing?
So I would, if I could, I would say that what's in the budget book is what is actually being adopted. It may be that there's a transcription error, that we may have just gotten a number incorrect in the table here for the presentation. But Sheila, if you are able to take a look in the budget document and just try to confirm.
I can do that.
Chair Beechy, as Sheila does that, I would suggest we move on to other questions, and we can come back to this clarification.
Sure thing. Do we have any other questions from the Budget Committee?
Not seen any additional questions.
Okay.
So we could move to the public comment and then just revisit this before you take a vote.
Okay.
Right. Thank you, our wonderful IT team for that. So now is the time for members of public to provide public testimony for up to two minutes per individual and up to five minutes for recognized community planning organizations on this proposed budget for the North Bethany Service District for Roads. So if you have any questions or comments, I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seen any hands. Chair Beechy?
Okay. And did everyone have, I guess we can review the question, the answers from the previous hearing. They were provided to us, so that was good information to to keep for all of us. So I appreciate you guys, the staff, to provide us with the Q and A from before. So we have documentation. Thank you very much.
So Clerk Moss, can we go back to the slide that Chair Beechy was asking about? And Sheila, did you have an answer for that?
Well, I'm confirming beginning fund balance of 14,772 is consistent with, which is in the budget documents. Confirm that the proposed total revenues and expenditures are the 18,997,983. So the proposed budget appears to be correct. There might be a type geographical error in the mid-year estimate numbers, but the proposed budget is consistent with what is in the budget document.
Okay. I mean, that's what I was wondering if it is as a mid-year estimate, if it was, if there were some just kind of they're rounded off numbers to 2 million, the 1.8 million, if there was some kind of, yeah, fluctuation in that. So it's not off by a ton relatively. But, yeah, like I said, it was, I got a different number as I ran them.
Chair Beechy, if I would suggest, we can take your question and comment as a matter of the record. And from a process, we will go back and verify this information. And if there does need to be made an adjustment, we can bring that forward to the Board of Commissioners, but we would also inform your Budget Committee of that as well. So the committee could still take action tonight because we do have the final step of approval with the Board of Commissioners.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I have a question to Tonia, Chair Beechy, if that's okay. Tonia, rather than rushing through and approving this, could we pause and figure out if these numbers are actually correct and answer Beechy's, Chair Beechy's question?
We can do that. I would suggest, just to be helpful to staff then, that we would take maybe, looking at the time, a five-minute intermission, just so staff can work on that. It can be a little stressful to be working on that on screen, if that's what the committee wants to do.
I see Commissioner Rogers has his hand up.
There, thank you. I appreciate not only the thoroughness the chair went through and looked at these numbers. That's always important. Thank you. But their estimates, they're going to change a lot between now and June 30th of the following year. We're a long ways out, so we can certainly do the scribbling corrections and still approve it. I don't know that that's going to be a significant issue. And as the CEO said, we'll bring that back to this group, as well as Board, and move forward. I don't see personally that, though, it's disappointing when we find these little things. It's not earth-shattering. It's not unheard of. Budgets are meant to be projections and best guesses. So I'm comfortable moving forward.
Yeah, and if I could jump in on that, I would agree with that. The proposed budget numbers are accurate as compared to, because I'm reading the document in front of me. So they are good numbers. I would agree with that. And so if we could just, if we could just go ahead, and if the next step is to adopt this, then I would so move we do that.
With that, Clerk Moss, if you could move to slide 13, please. Thank you. Chair Beechy, at this time, we'll look for a motion to approve. We do need the language for the motion to reflect what you see on the page.
Right.
Wait a minute. I think I voiced pausing, and you've heard from two members, and you've heard from two members to also question this. So I think maybe we can call to a vote to see if we want to pause for five minutes to correct this and then to come back, or if we want to move forward. So just processing check here.
Is it staff, is it possible to double-check this for that five minutes?
Yes.
Okay. If we could pause and just make sure that we're reflecting accurately what we have for public documents, I think that would make our committee members feel better about what we're about to to approve and go forward with it, if that's possible. First, I have to do that at this time.
Chair Beechy, I would ask that Clerk Moss set a five-minute timer so that we all know to come back at five minutes. And that allows staff the opportunity to turn their camera off to be working on this.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. We'll pause for five minutes. If Clerk Moss can go ahead and start the five-minute timer. Absolutely. Thank you very much. We'll pause for five minutes. If Clerk Moss can go ahead and start the five-minute timer.
Commissioners, committee members, are you back with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, I'm here.
So handed back to staff to see if we have an answer to the question. Sheila?
Yes. So there appears to be a typo on my slide, totally my, my error in the tax revenue collected. So Sarah, if that was 90938, then our, all of our stuff would, would match up. So the beginning fund balance of 11,286,476 plus the 900,938 plus then the 3.89 less the 1.2 million ends up with the beginning fund balance for next year of 14.7.
Okay. And yeah, I had gotten like a 14 eight something. I mean, it's, it's about $35,000. This was the difference that I saw, unless I'm transposing some numbers somewhere.
No. So like I said, if it was 900,938, like I said, it would, it does add up. Again, my error on this slide.
Awesome. Thank you very much for clarifying. Yeah, just, you know, you always want to double check. I know it's a small, you know, it's a small amount of money, but you know.
To be clear, the, the beginning fund balance of the 14.7 million is correct for next fiscal year. And then the appropriations as stated for next fiscal year are correct.
Okay. Is that, how does the committee feel about that?
I was just going to add, so the mid-year estimate itself is not a part of the budget document. That's sort of a estimating tool that helps us to get to the budget allocation for this coming year. So the, again, it's a, appears to be a typo in the slide and doesn't affect anything that's in the actual proposed budget document itself.
All right. So committee members, do you have any further questions about that now that we have clarification?
I just want to say, I really appreciate having a budget chair who is this conscientious. So I just want to say thank you, Sarah. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Sorry. I, yeah, I used to work on state level stuff, so you always want to double check your numbers. I've been, and I don't mean to, I'm not, I've been staff. I've been staff most of my life, so I completely understand just asking for clarification. So thank you guys very much. So if we see no further questions, I would move to approve the fiscal year 2022, '23 budget for the North Bethany County Service District for Roads as proposed, leaving the permanent property tax rate of 1.25 per $1,000 of assessed value. And do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second for Mr. Reed. If we could, if everyone in favor can raise your hand or do the little icon in favor.
Who did we have the motion from?
I'm here.
Great. Thank you.
Dan seconding. And then any opposed? Raise your hand. Or do it by icon.
Chair Beechey, your motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, Clerk Moss.
Okay, next slide, please. Just a quick reminder, the Board of Commissioners will take up this budget adoption on the June 21st regular board meeting. As a reminder, we will also have public testimony in advance of the adoption. Next slide. And Chair Beechey, back to you for closing remarks and adjournment.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you for your service, your interim service with helping with our Budget Committee this term. And we look forward to welcoming and working with our new CFO. And thank you all to the committee members. And could you remind us of, do you know, the timing of the commissioners, the county commissioners meeting on June 21st?
I believe it's 10:30, Clerk Moss, is that correct?
Almost. The Budget Committee, Board Commissioners will be convening at 11:00 a.m. And so we will go through our normal routine of the consent items and then start the public hearings for the 10 budget items ending with the county budget will go last. So the North Bethany will be one of the first public hearings listed on the agenda. So roughly 11:15 to 11:20 would be about the public comment period.
All right. Yeah, it's the last day of school, so I'm sure it's going to be a hectic day, so for some of us. But thank you all, and I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will take a brief 10-minute recess, if that's okay with you. And then we will move into the enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District. So it is 6:10 now. We'll come back at 6:20 if that's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, committee members, and we will see you after our brief intermission. Good evening to any members of the public and other Budget Committee members that have joined us. The Board will be convening at 6:30 p.m. for the Advertise, ESPD, and UMRD Budget Committee. Thank you.
Clerk Moss, are we really starting in 27 minutes?
All right. 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 Good evening, Budget Committee members of the ESPD and UMRD, and Board of Commissioners, for this next Budget Committee meeting. Just to note for the record, we will start as the materials posted with the UMRD budget and take the public comment and any committee action, and then we will take an intermission and start with the ESPD budget at 7:30 as noted in the published materials. So with that, I will turn it over to, for a brief introduction, Ms. Angie.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and good evening, Budget Committee members. Earlier in tonight's meeting, we did walk through translation services, both Spanish as well as ASL, so we do not need to walk through those materials again, but I just wanted to let the Budget Committee members know that the public has been advised of these services available. And I'll turn it to you, interim Chief Financial Officer Rodney Rhodes. And actually, before I do that, I almost forgot that I did want to introduce Greg Munn to this Budget Committee. Greg Munn is our new Chief Financial Officer, and today is his first day. There you are, Greg. And so I wanted to give the Budget Committee an opportunity to just see at least Greg virtually, and our interim Chief Financial Officer will still be assisting with our Budget Committees, since, you know, this is Greg's first day. Let's not throw him into everything. So thanks for being here, Greg. And Rodney, I will turn it to you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will turn it over to Chair Laird to open the meeting and Clerk Moss to call. Chair Laird?
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Melissa Laird, Chair of this illustrious Budget Committee, and welcome aboard Greg Munn. Happy to have you here and look forward to working with you in the future. With that, I turn it over to Clerk Mark Moss to give us the roll call.
Thank you, Chair Laird. Fernando Lira?
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me fine?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Great. Glad to be here. Fernando Lira, part of the committee here, and just glad to be participating, listening, and being of service. So great to see you all, and thanks for being here.
Thank you. Raymond Eck?
Yeah, I'm here all the way from Kona, Hawaii, so I am glad to be able to get on the Internet. It's been cutting off a little bit for me, so hopefully I can get all the way through it.
Sounds good. Stephen Barron?
Good evening. My sincere apologies for missing the last meeting, but I'm here tonight.
Sean Fields?
Here. Hello, everybody.
Welcome. Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Phi?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Chair Harrington? And Chair Laird?
Yeah.
All right, you have a quorum of all 10 members. Madam Chair?
Ooh, great. Good job, everyone. All right. With that, is there a review of the slides?
Yes, so that will be slide 25 for our IT stuff.
All right, so who will be doing the review? For the starter?
Mr. Roberts, are you there?
Yeah, I'm actually going to introduce Sheri McFall. Sheri is our Urban Road Maintenance District Program Coordinator, and she's actually going to walk us through the budget presentation for the Urban Road Maintenance District. So go ahead, Sheri.
Thank you, Stephen. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about the ERMED budget this evening. As you, as most of you know, the ERMED very closely mirrors the urban growth boundary within Washington County, and it's a district specially made to to provide road maintenance for the unincorporated area that is at the same standard or or as good a standard as the cities in the area. So the ERMED has, at 215,000 people in the ERMED, it is the, it would be the second largest city in Oregon if it was incorporated as a city, following Portland. Next slide. Here we have revenue for ERMED, and its property owners in the ERMED pay 2, 4, 5, 6 cents per $1,000 of assessed value. Nearly 100% of the revenue in ERMED comes from that assessment. Next slide. As you can see, the majority of the funds of the expenditures for ERMED come from the, go to the ERMED pedestrian and bicycling projects, and these are improvements that are requested by the community of Washington County to increase the facilities and the roadways for pedestrians and cyclists. This year, we're also adding, in, along with the initiative that Washington County, that EDI initiative that Washington County is following, we've, we've also kind of looked at our programs in the ERMED to determine what we could do to increase equity, improve equity in the ERMED. And one opportunity that we found was sidewalks. Sidewalks are the responsibility of property owners adjacent to the sidewalk, and so sometimes it's too expensive for sidewalk owners to be able to repair or replace their sidewalks. So we have set aside funds to develop a pilot program for sidewalk repair assistance grants. We are currently developing parameters and determining what the process will be for that. And that wraps up my presentation.
Thank you very much. Just a reminder for those that were watching this evening, we did dedicate two evenings to these budgets, May 16th and May 19th. Those budgets, those presentations are, have been recorded and are available on the 2022, 2023 County Budget Reports webpage. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Laird, for questions and discussions.
Go ahead, Raymond.
I'm sorry.
Sheri, you gave a, gave a number of 215,000 people living in unincorporated Washington County. What year is that? And then what was the, what was the figure in 2010? Any ideas?
I couldn't, you know, Ray, I couldn't tell you what the figure was in 2010. The figure we have now is, it mirrors the population that's in the ESPD, and so that's where we got that figure.
Has that figure gone down or up?
It increased since last year.
Okay, you answered my question. Thank you.
Mr. Rogers?
Ray was sort of getting at some of the information that I was curious about. It'd be nice to understand not only the population changes, assessed value changes, any other demographics. It might be interesting. When we originally put this district together, it was a much smaller, obviously, population, but the idea was that there would be some transference, which hasn't occurred as rapidly as we all thought, but I'm just curious whether it's expanding or contracting, and I don't mean in dollars. We have that information, but I mean demographics. That, that's one request, but the real question? but I mean demographics. That's one request. But the real question is, your overhead administrative costs that can't be actual, not on $11 million, you can't have $100 and some thousand dollars, so it can't be full costed. Is there a reason that we're not costing all of our labor for good, yourself, Todd, and whoever else might be involved over there? That's the question.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. So for the, the population and for the size of ERMED, whether it's, it's growing or shrinking, you know, we keep the roads in shape so that they are ready to take over when the city's annex parts of our area. And that continues through the year continually. Beaverton, Twallington, Hillsborough, all annexing parts of the ERMED. The population may grow, but that doesn't necessarily translate to geographic size. And I am sorry, I don't have specifics for you. Perhaps Stephen Roberts could give you more detail if he has it. But I do know, I can tell you that throughout the year, parts of the ERMED are being annexed continually.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't want to belabor that, but I understand. We, we have a great pavement management program. That's why some of the monies were diverted to other uses. You're talking about sidewalks. There's a number of projects that's been done. But I'm just more curious, you know, what the, what the future is. I mean, if you fixed everything tomorrow, if you had the money, you'd still be taking in revenue. What are you going to do with that? And then how are we going to use that to do other amenities? Might be trails, it could be bike paths, it could be a number of things. I'm just trying to get a glimpse of the future.
Okay. So the roads, even though the roads are built, they do require, you know, continual maintenance?
Very good.
I'm sorry?
No, I said, no, I get, I get that. I'm just trying to understand. Again, we have a pavement, a great pavement management program. And I understand what we're doing. And so I'm trying to get down to the nub of it. I'm going to stop because I really want to know why the management fee is so low. But it'd be interesting, maybe for the board, Stephen, at some point, to kind of give us an update on the future. I always like to project where we're going, not where we've been and where we're at, where we're going. Yeah.
Yeah, if I could just jump in here real quickly. On the bike and ped projects, we have enough of those to keep us busy infinity. We have such a large list of bike and ped pedestrian crossings and the new, the new pedestrian crossing with the lights. So that continues to increase, and they're all, they're all based upon residents' requests, right? So they're all from the community. And that project could last forever. I mean, it's a huge list that constantly we wish we could do more every year. So I know that's one place that we've always continued to step. With that, I think we want to read, address to Commissioner Rogers' question about the overhead costs. And you don't think the full cost is represented in the budget? Was that the question, Mr. Rogers?
It is. I'm trying to get my mouse to work so I can get my hand down. I'm sorry.
No worries, no worries. Yeah. So if maybe Mr. Roberts, you could address the administrative costs.
Yeah, I think that, to your point, so, so the Urban Road Maintenance District, along with all of the other budget funds in the department, do help pay for countywide indirect charges and department overhead charges, as well as direct costs for the staff who administer the program. So Sherri, for instance, you know, a significant amount of her time is, is billed to the, to the district itself. So the, so the budget expenditures do reflect those, those overhead costs and staff administration costs.
And I'll chime in too, Commissioner. What we've, what we've seen is the growth of the infill development that's occurred within the district has added road segments to our inventory, and that's actually bolstered the overall payment condition as well. So those roads, and North Bethany is a good example, right? That area, which is part of ERMED, has seen a significant development rate faster than was originally predicted. And so those roads, which are in great condition now, will need to be serviced in the coming years. And so we are going to see those catch up to us. And so our goal is to maintain, you know, a healthy fund balance so that we will always be at the ready with that primary core mission of road maintenance. The bike and pedestrian program has been a really successful effort, as Sherri mentioned, to bolster the, the connectivity and the accessibility to those active transportation modes. And we'll continue to do that as long as we can. As Melissa and Ray can attest, there is no shortage of project candidates for the committee to consider. And we, and we plan on doing that for as long as we can. So we will do that. The NSP, the Native Pursuits Program, you know, that was expanded recently to include collectors that have a residential element to them or a component to them. So we'll definitely have things for us to keep the district busy in the future. We are fortunate, though, that, you know, we do have an active payment management program, and we are keeping tabs on that. So we don't expect there to be any sort of major slide in that, in that road condition.
And Commissioner, just really quickly, I've been doing a little bit of research on your earlier question. So as it turns out, the population within the district has been actually relatively flat. At one time, our PSU population estimates for the urban unincorporated area were approaching 250, or were maybe just slightly over 250,000. After the 2020 census, those numbers were revised down to the 215,000 that you saw on the slide. I went back and looked at the 2010 population estimates, and it was around 213,000. So in terms of population growth, it's, again, you know, based on the population data, not a big amount of growth. I looked at the assessed valuation as well. That has actually increased from about $15 billion to nearly $24 billion over that same timeframe. So there's been a roughly 60% increase in the assessed valuation over time.
All right. Are you good, Commissioner Rogers? Any follow up? Okay, thanks. Any other questions, comments from the Budget Committee? Okay, CNN, are we then ready to move on to public testimony?
We are. Chair Laird?
Okay. So Clerk Moss, could you help us assist in the management of the public testimony, please?
Yes, absolutely. Now is the time for a public comment, for a public testimony at this public hearing, up to two minutes per individual and five minutes for recognized community planning organizations. We'll give what any members of the public wish to provide public testimony on the ERMED proposed budget. I will give you a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Laird?
So should we give it one more minute? I know there's 16 attendees out there. Is there anyone wishing to give public testimony?
No.
All right. Okay. Well, then, let's move on to motion to approve. So.
Could we move to slide 33, please? There we go.
Okay, so I would like to make the motion to approve the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget for the Urban Road Maintenance District as proposed, unleaving the ERMED permanent property tax value of .2456 cents per 1,000 assessed value. I'm looking for a second.
A second.
Thank you, Raymond. Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, CNN, no discussion. We'll vote. So do, Clerk Moss, do you want us all to raise our hands? Our ritual hands or physical hands?
You can do either or, and I will count and give the result for you.
Okay, so all in favor of approving this motion, say hi by either raising your ritual hand or your real hand, or both. All right. Okay, lower hands. All those who disapprove, say no. Raise your hands.
Okay, the motion passes 10 to 0, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you, committee. Well done. So then, now we're done with the Urban Maintenance, Urban Road Maintenance District. I want to thank everybody for participating in this, and especially Sherri for doing a great job of shepherding through the budget discussion with us in the presentation. It's a great job, and we really appreciate it. Okay, on to ESPD.
And Chair Laird, we will take an intermission and tell my goodness, you're right, because that is what the published, public hearing time is. So Clerk Moss will display the time keeper so that we can ensure we're all back here at 7:30 promptly. Thank you, Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Ms. Angie. All right, everybody. So enjoy the next half hour. We'll see you at 7:30.
Clerk Moss, can you check the timer?
Yes, as Angie was saying, 38 minutes from now, which it's 6:52, so that would take us right to 7:30.
Thank you. There must have been a delay on my screen because I wasn't seeing the timer. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Budget Committee will be starting in just about a minute. Oh, Catherine, if you were talking, your double mute was on, I couldn't.
Thank you. Clerk Moss, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Phi called me, she will be participating in the remainder of the meeting, but will need to do so off camera.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Angie, are they, is there?
We are here, Melissa.
Yes.
Hi, so I was wondering if at the beginning of this, if I could have a minute. I neglected to bring up, we had gotten a written testimony for the ERM Deck Budget from Patrick O'Clair, and I think it would be important just so that the Budget Committee know that we got that and the response that ERM crafted and sent to Patrick O'Clair from Sherry McFall, so would that be appropriate? It doesn't, I don't, I wish I would have remembered it earlier when we were looking at the questions and if there was any written testimony to bring on, I think there was an expectation that this person was gonna actually do a public testimony, but obviously didn't come, but I just think it would be appropriate for the Budget Committee just to understand that we got this written testimony and how it was, how it was handled. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does Chair Laird, and we can ensure that it's part of the record as well.
Okay, thank you. I think by the time I get this chair duty all figured out, my chairmanship will be over. But anyway, yeah, I think it would be good to still everybody know, thank you.
All right, are we back Budget Committee members?
Do we need to do a roll call?
No, I see most everyone is back Chair Laird, so we will hand it back over to you.
So, hi, welcome again, thanks for coming back for the second half of our Budget Committee discussions on the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol Division Budget, but before we get started on that, I would like to go back and make one comment on the ERM budget, and something that I want to make sure that all of the Budget Committee members were aware of, we did get a written testimony from Patrick O'Clair who requested that we add two permanent fixed location solar powered LED flashing traffic speed indicators Southwest Rochack Road between Southwest Dewberry Lane and Southwest Delia Court. So, that was handled, and a response was sent back through Sherry McFall to Mr. O'Clair, and I just want to make sure that you're aware of this, so there has been several traffic speed and volume studies that have been performed on Rochack Road in the last five years, and it was measuring the data to determine the eligibility of Rochack Road for permanent traffic calming facilities, which is what this gentleman was requesting. Unfortunately, the road does not meet all of the eligibility criteria, and in particular, it doesn't meet the requirements for traffic speed, both the average speeds as well as, which is 25 miles, this is posted 25 miles an hour, this road, and both the average speeds as well as the 85th percentile speeds on Rochack are less than five miles per hour above the posted 25 mile per hour speed limit, and Sherry did include a graphic in her email back to Mr. O'Clair showing them the results of the studies that have been done on that road, so thanked him for the request, and that they'll continue to look at that road to see if it meets the eligibility of permanent traffic calming facilities, but as of now, it's not eligible, so just wanted to make sure you're all aware of that written testimony that we got and the resolution of it, is there any questions on that, and again, I apologize for not bringing it up in the last meeting. Are you all good with that?
Thank you Chair Laird, this is a situation that the current Board of Commissioners is aware of, given past testimony from Mr. O'Clair at the Board of Commissioners meetings as well, so thank you for the latest update, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you Chair Harrington, yeah, I did note that he said he contacted you guys as well, all right, with that, let's move on to ESPD, I guess the meeting is still called to order, and I need to start my video, thank you.
If we could go to slide 21, and I'll introduce Sheriff Pat Garrett.
Thank you.
Good evening, Committee Chair Laird and Committee Members, Sheriff Pat Garrett here. The Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District includes the more densely populated urban areas that lie outside cities and require an urban level service rather than a rural level service, before the Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District was established, staffing in the urban unincorporated area was provided at the rural level, or about one half an officer per 1,000 residents, the urban unincorporated service level standard adopted in 1987 was about one officer per 1,000 residents, or about twice the service level of the rural area, the service level was informed by recommendations from a Public Safety Review Committee established by the Board in 1986, the Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District was formed by the Board and approved by voters in 1987, I'm humbled and overjoyed to report strong voter support during this most recent election for continuing ESPD services and measure 34310, while I'm very thankful to our community and dedicated staff for this outcome, my sincere and deep appreciation to our Board of Commissioners for their support to continue these services, slide please. This pie chart reflects the Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District budget, which is found, which is Fund 182, the chart reflects the change listed on the right side of the major budget components from last year's request to this year's request, our total ESPD budget request this year is just over $34 million, an increase of 1% from last year's request. One note about the category of other, halfway down the right side, WACA is the acronym for the Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency, that's our dispatch provider, a really small portion of the entire budget, they're at 1%, slide please. Consistent with our commitment to be a learning organization, our training centers Mock Main Street helps provide excellence in scenario-based training to refine communication, coordination, and de-escalation strategies during rapidly evolving incidents, we improve policy through frequent review by maintaining national accreditation and input from our staff and our community, and more recently, from outside experts, we invited to review our use of force policy, training, and procedures, we strive to tailor services to meet emerging community needs, like the rise in car thefts, other property crimes, domestic violence, and being part of an integrated response with our behavioral health partners and our public health partners to better serve those experiencing behavioral health challenges through services like our mental health response team, slide please. Remaining adaptive to community needs is central to keeping our community safe and to our service delivery strategy, to that end, we are building more robust houseless outreach and program engagement to partner with multi-sector integrated services to connect unhoused community members with shelter resources, we continue to be strong supporters of the state's statistical transparency of policing project, which provides annual reports of traffic stops, our report most recently showed equity across stops and post-stop outcomes for our drivers who are black, Asian, Middle Eastern, or Native American, for our Latinx drivers, our post-stop outcomes did show disparity, and our own data shows the biggest driver of that post-stop disparity are citations for no operator's license and no insurance, and we're just beginning to work upstream with the Oregon Department of Transportation to provide more culturally specific driving licensing programs so that we can increase licensing and better serve those Spanish-speaking, Spanish speakers of our community to include those in Washington County. Our equity investments this past year include translating our, the Justice Court's Fix-it Ticket Program, which provides opportunity to dismiss citations for 19 violations, and making it more accessible to our community members who are Spanish speakers, we also provided multiple public safety messages in Spanish through our social media platforms, including public service announcements with our including public service announcements with our Mexican consulate partners through their networks as well. We also translated a 27-page community grief pamphlet, which better enables us to serve our Latinx community when we have an unfortunate death in the home, which during COVID, that became more important. We greatly appreciate the great advice, the questions, the reality checks we get from our Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District Advisory Committee and our Latino Advisory Commission. Slide please. Thank you, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Clerk Moss, if we, if we can move to slide 21.
Well, we're not quite ready for public testimony, aren't we ready for just the Budget Committee internal question?
Yes ma'am.
So thank you Sheriff Garrett for that recap, is there any questions from the Budget Committee? I see Raymond's hand is up, I also want to just mention briefly that not only this discussion, but we had a variety of Q and As that were posted on, on the site, and if there's any comments relative to those. And also, I'm not aware of any written testimony, but if there, there is, we should highlight that and let that be noted this time as well. So that, with that Raymond, start with you.
You are on mute Raymond.
Unmute yourself.
Thanks Chair, I've got a little couple of questions here. ERM has so many, so much of a population, and unincorporated Washington County has a certain amount of population. Are they synonymous to themselves? And part two to that, which I don't think they're synonymous, is Sherry has given a figure of 215,000 as a population. Sheriff Garrett has given us a projection that we were at 250,000, now we're 213,000 for unincorporated Washington County. So we're looking at two figures at 215,000, that seems a little bit odd to me. Can somebody give me some little clarification on that?
Yeah, Committee Member Act, thank you for the question, so I caught most of that, there was, our connectivity was just a little, a little challenge there. What I can tell you is that our current, what we, what we reported previously was the estimate population of the Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District was, is 214,000. Now, you might remember from our last presentation that the census figures did, did lower that estimate significantly. So, you know, it may, might it be 215,000 versus 214,000? Absolutely, but our current estimate that I am tracking is right at 214,000.
Correct, I, I, I just kind of gave a synopsis, the two figures are pretty much the same, so. And in the ERM area, in unincorporated Washington County, I do not believe they are the same two figures, the same group of people, there are some pluses and minuses, so. So still, that figure of maybe within a thousand people just doesn't quite seem right to me, so. And maybe, and maybe Chair or, or group can kind of give me a little bit more information on why that figure is where it's at.
We're happy to look into that, Mr. I can get back, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, yeah, so your question is what's the difference between the ERM's population and the ESPD population? In essence, okay. So probably heavy lot of overlap, but there might be some, some minor differences that you're asking for some clarification. So, or maybe Sheriff Garrett, you could work on that with the Luke's team.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you, any other questions, comments from the Budget Committee? Any, so were there any written testimonies that we received from, for ESPD? If anybody?
I don't, I was mic. I don't believe so Chair Laird, Clerk Moss, are you aware of any?
I'm not aware of any either.
Okay, just want to make sure I don't miss it this time, make sure we get everything. And then also just to remind the Budget Committee, we have quite a few questions that were asked in the last several Budget Committee meetings, and the answers to those have been posted on the website, and so they're up there as well. And if there's any continuing discussion or follow-on for those, but there was 13, 12 questions that happened over the last several discussions that we've had on the budgets. So again, is there any other questions, comments, remarks from any of the Budget Committee members? Okay, with that, I think it is now time to move to the public hearing and the public testimony, and so Clerk Moss, can you help get this underway?
Yes, thank you Chair Laird, would any members of the public like to provide public testimony at this time for up to two minutes per person and five minutes for recognized community planning organizations regarding the ESPD budget presentation for tonight? I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Laird.
Okay, so once again, we have 12 attendees out there, so let's just give it one more minute to make sure there's nobody out there that wants to provide any kind of input, testimony.
Fair Laird?
Yes?
Looking at the names, many of them are Washington County staff members.
Well, that's good, they're coming in.
Almost all of them.
And giving up their evening to go through the budget one more time, so that's, that's great job, staff members, so appreciate everybody here. All right, with that, I don't move to the next page. I would then like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2022-23 budget for the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol Division as proposed. Also approve the levying of the ESPD permanent property tax rate of .6365 per $1,000 of assessed value. And approve the ESPD local option levy rate of .68 cents per 1,000 of assessed value. May I have a second?
Commissioner Trees raised her hand for a second.
Second, thank you Catherine.
Thank you Commissioner Trees for the second, okay, is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seeing and hearing no discussion, let's vote, all those in favor of these approving the budget and motion as stated, please raise your virtual and a physical hand. All right, lower those, and all those who oppose, please raise your virtual or physical hand. Raymond, are you?
I'm opposing.
Okay.
So Chair Laird, the motion passes nine to one.
Thank you. Is there any comment you want to make Raymond, or are you?
I'm, I'm a little concerned about the two figures in, in population, and how can they be so close? I'm a little concerned on the amount of people who have left unincorporated Washington County versus coming in. And so I'm concerned about the number of people that Sheriff Garrett has to cut back on. So at this point, my feeling is that those figures should be looked at again and find a way that we can get those 14 people back on permanent duty.
Okay, um, thank you Committee Member Act, and some of that, some of that concern is really more reflected in the general budget, in the Washington County budget versus the ERM that, of ESPD budget, but I understand your comments. All right, any other comments, questions? With that, do we have any other business that we need to perform tonight?
Chair Laird, just a reminder to the, those watching, we will have the budget adoption process take place on June 21st at the regular board meeting, and we will have a whole public testimony again before the adoption of that budget.
Okay, thank you very much Mr. Reynolds. All right, with that, I just want to thank everybody for their service on this committee, and thank you for honoring me to be Chair. I enjoyed chairing this committee and being here with you guys, thank you so much for all your service. And with that, I think the meeting is adjourned. Thanks everybody.
Thank you.
Take care.